Called a meeting to order. I would like to welcome everyone to our November 3, 2014 Board of Education meeting. And everyone think is present. We'll have our pledge of allegiance. Gio?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. At this time, we have a moment of silence. And what we will do is just continue to like to remember our students and staff and always think about the safety of them. And we also need to think and pray about our country and that we have a good outcome and everybody will support and vote tomorrow and be a part of that. And we also, we need to remember our parents and the things that they do for our school system and their safety also. Let's have a moment of silence. Amen. Let's see, the adjustments to the agenda. We have one item that needs to be added. And that would be Aiden Middle School Robotics Team. That'll be number four. Under Spotlight on Teaching. I hear a motion.
Chairman, when I make a motion, you approve the agenda as amended.
Second, any discussion about this item? Voting to add this item to the agenda? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve routine business?
You got the motion. I make it.
Benji made the motion. Mark seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right. Public expression? Okay. Who's it, Caroline? All right. Caroline Doherty.
Hi, I'm Caroline Doherty. I'm here representing parents from public schools of Pitt County. I'm the vice president. I'm here to give your quarterly update. It's the first time we've addressed you this year. As you know, our mission is to strengthen Pitt County public schools by engaging, educating, and mobilizing our community. We're governed by a volunteer board of diverse backgrounds and talents. And we are pleased to have three major partners, Pitt County Schools, United Way of Pitt County, and the Greenville-Pitt Chamber of Commerce. Currently have over 300 members. They receive monthly newsletters from us at the local level and our national chapter, Parents from Public Schools. They also get invitations to special events. As you know, we started out the year with a bang, co-sponsoring with you, United Way and the Chamber, the Education Network luncheon, where over 280 teachers and business leaders attended and were seated together so they could collaborate. We hope to sponsor more of these events with you and our partners, where teachers and business and industry leaders can not only learn from each other, but look together for ways to support innovative teaching and create new opportunities for our students that expose them to viable career possibilities here in Pitt County. We have some great news. We learned late in the summer, we received a two-year grant from a major funder in North Carolina, the Z Smith Reynolds Foundation. And that is to support our three major programs, Community Conversations, School Tours, and the Parent Engagement Program. I'll take a minute to speak about those. Community Conversations are based on our belief that the first step towards creating positive change is to gather input and insights on current issues from all stakeholders. Community Conversations are held with parents and businesses and other community members who want to share their perspectives, their concerns, and their ideas for strengthening our schools in an informal and friendly environment, not in front of a board or being televised. Comfortable is the idea. To date, we've held 10 Community Conversations with 160 people, including parents, educators, community leaders. We've learned a great deal about their experiences and their perspectives. We've held them in schools, in businesses, Boys and Girls Club, Latino Center, and with service organizations such as the Kiwanis. Next week, we have Community Conversations scheduled with the Rotary Club and with the staff of the local industry during their lunch break. School Tours, our second major initiative, is designed for people to visit public schools in a guided format with other interested parties, such as business leaders, elected officials, community leaders, and parents who are considering enrolling their children in the public schools. School Tours help people see for themselves what our public schools are like and the opportunities that they offer. All tours are coordinated through the schools with Brock Letchworth, who is of course the PCS liaison on our board. We led a school tour last month with several community leaders who were very impressed with the STEM labs and the other things that they saw for their own eyes, what our schools are doing. Our schools, our tours are scheduled monthly throughout the year. Our last major initiative is called PEP, Parent Engagement Program. It's a leadership institute, which is basically a class for parents developed by PPS that seeks to improve student achievement, increase parent engagement, and enhance school and parent collaboration. Our PEP trainings are conducted by local facilitators and supported by a PEP coordinator, all trained by the National PPS Office. Our trainings are designed to educate and energize participants on a wide range of topics, such as learning styles, school funding, data accountability, core curriculum. Right now, we have 18 amazing participants who were enrolled in our inaugural class, which met for the first time in mid-October. They are scheduled to meet one day a month for the rest of the year. They're going to graduate in this room in April. We hope you all will come. We have truly high-quality participants who really are excited about learning more about public education and how they can partner both with the teachers in their classroom, with their schools, and with the education system together. Lastly, PCS Strategic Planning. We are thrilled to have been invited to participate at the Strategic Planning Stakeholder Meetings. Our president Kathy Herring and our executive director Carolyn Reed represented our chapter in that process. We're also sharing the collective findings of our 10 Community Conversations and any more that we'll be having with your administration to augment your decision-making in the strategic planning. We were really happy to have Dr. Linker attend our first annual member network meeting last week. He presented the strategic planning process and findings to date. We had about 50 members who were in attendance, who stayed the whole time, and we're very appreciative that you stayed the whole time and took questions from them. Our members are thrilled to provide strategic plan input by working in small groups on specific questions from your stakeholder meetings. It is just this sort of engagement that we, as a chapter, hope to continue to foster because we know that when parents and teachers and the community work together, we all win. Thank you.
Thanks, Carolyn. Appreciate that update. Okay. Boy, really, we don't have a question.
Good evening. A couple of things tonight. First, wanted to bring to your attention, one of our schools recently named a Title I Rewards School by the state. Elmhurst Elementary was, whoops, it's walking in a little bit here. Represented tonight by Principal Colleen Bird, Assistant Principal Tracy Gibbs, and several staff members. Y'all could just kind of come over here by me so we can... We want to see your faces on the camera. Elmhurst was one of 78 schools in the state to be named a Title I Rewards School. Reward School is one that has been identified by the state as being in the top 10% for two categories, either one, a high, one of the highest performing schools, or being a high-progress school. This is the second straight year, if y'all recall, last year we had a couple of schools in here Northwest and Creekside who are in this distinction. And I'm going to let Ms. Bird briefly talk to you about this, and I think she's got an explanation for why she's at the school.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I've only been at Elmhurst for a year. This is my second year, so I can't take credit for all of the hard work that was done before me. However, I can say that after being at Elmhurst, there is a tradition of excellence there for anybody that has had children that have gone there or they have worked there. And Elmhurst is a unique, small school that continues that tradition of excellence and now being in the heart of Elmhurst, I see why. So this afternoon, in our lengthy staff meeting, I asked the staff to reflect, and we did a thinking map about why we thought Elmhurst was such an extraordinary school. And the staff got together and wrote their ideas. It didn't take them more than four or five minutes to get all of these wonderful ideas out. But one theme that was consistent was dedication, teamwork, and family, holding high expectations, and just caring about children and sticking together. But family and teamwork were the themes that we saw throughout the whole staff. So I just want to commend them because the teachers at Elmhurst work so hard, and it's because of them, they make my job easier, and they make the children at Elmhurst so successful. So thank you.
County Board of Education, so happy with what you've done, and we proudly recognize you with Elmhurst Elementary School for creating excellence in these, and all the hard work that you did. But anyway, we appreciate all of that. It takes, it takes a team to be able to do something like this.
We trying to get in there.
Yeah.
Photo bombing.
Maybe try to get, so he can't see me.
We don't want to spread out. You out of order. Benji, you out of order.
I think they call it photo bombing.
Okay, next, I'm going to introduce J.H. Rose, a high school math teacher named Jennifer Maeve, and she's going to talk to you a little bit, provide a brief overview and demonstration on how she uses the concept of a spin classroom to teach. Just make it, come on up.
Thank you guys for letting me come speak tonight. Thank you, Dr. Linker, for coming to my classroom and seeing some good things that are going on. Let me pull this up real quick. All right. So basically, what I want to just talk about is spinning in the classroom. It's just a concept that I've used. I'm on the school improvement team at Rose High School, and one of the goals that's been passed down to us is to deliver a personalized education to all students. It's kind of a broad goal, and you know, looking at it as a teacher, I'm trying to figure out how I can do that in my own classroom. And I had the benefit of attending Tech Fest this past summer, which, as a math teacher, technology, I've always been very leery of that. I mean, how can it actually help? I feel like I'm doing things that are working right now. God bless you. And so what I saw was actually something really cool in, well, first of all, let me tell you who I teach. I don't teach honors math. Right now, I'm teaching my year-long babies, or my babies. There are a very diverse range of learners. I've got people who are true freshmen. I've also got students who have been mostly repeaters in the same class, so it's very diverse. I've got a broad range of ability there. I have those hard-to-engage students, and once I get them engaged, it's hard to keep them engaged. If something happens, usually that just kind of takes their attention away. And I also have students who tend to be consistently weak in math, so that's my target audience. I also teach discrete math and teach different things throughout the year, but right now, this is consistently who I'm teaching. When I went to Tech Fest, I saw some social studies teachers, so I can't take complete credit, I've just adapted it. Some social studies teachers at South Central were using this, and I thought, you know, maybe I can do this in my classroom, I don't know, let's see how it works. And basically what it involves, has anybody in here heard of spinning? No, okay. What you've probably heard of is flipping. Has anybody heard of flipping? Okay, and basically, that's pre-recording lessons, having the students go home, watch the lesson on their own device, coming back in and having the next day to do activities, collaboration, and all that stuff. Well, if you just saw the kind of audience that I'm teaching to, a lot of them do not have cell phones, they don't have computers, they have no internet access. So what spinning does is instead of watching the videos for homework, you watch them during class. So it's kind of like teaching, but on video, which is kind of weird, because you're thinking, well, the teacher's there, why can't she teach anyways? So, right? I know. So there's actually a portal that I use, it's not just YouTube. I know my students very well. I know if I were to give them the video to watch, they would be listening to YouTube channels, music playing, they'd be fast-forwarding, trying just to get the gist, not really paying attention. So there's this, there's this tool called educannon.com, and basically what it does is it allows me to create my own videos. So it's personalized, it's Miss Maeve teaching to them and the language that I use every day. But I'm able to insert little checkpoints at certain places to check for understanding. I can create questions. So I want you to try this on your own. You'll see an example in a minute. And they have to get through these checkpoints to move on. They can't fast-forward. That's the coolest part. I think Dr. Linker was most impressed with the fact that I can monitor student progress as I'm going on. I've got my computer opening up on my teaching podium, and as they're going, it's a live screen, and I'll show you what it looks like in a second. Green means they're getting the questions correct, red incorrect. So when I see red, I'm going to see those students and see what they're doing, and try to correct what they're doing right there on the spot. It, you know, we're data-driven society, right? We want to see how we're making leaps and bounds achievements. And so I can, I can tell you whether or not my students are getting it before they actually take the test. So here's an example of what a lesson looks like. I'm not going to bore you with watching the whole thing, just so you can see. This is a lesson in educannon.com. Hey, guys. Today, we're going... Okay, that's about all you need to hear of me. But what happens is, this is my lesson. These little orange things down here are checkpoints where I've inserted in questions. So I can fast-forward because I'm a teacher. But what will happen is, if they get closer to here, what's going to happen? So pause the video here, work on these problems, and then when you are done and have tried your best and answered them on the computer, you can continue on. And a question pops up. They can't go on unless they answer the question. Well, most students would just check a question just to move on. Well, I'm monitoring it, and this is what it looks like when I'm monitoring it, up here. Okay, so I can select my classes, I can select whatever one I've done, I think this is the one that I did the most. Live feedback. Green means they've gotten the answers correct, red means they're doing it incorrectly. So I can look across and see which students got it. I can also look down and see which questions are giving them the most concern. And I can look back at that question and think, what in the world was I trying to assess in that problem? This tool has been phenomenal for me. I'll show you an example of what it looks like in my classroom. This is what it looks like in my classroom. And there is sound. What do you hear? Silence. That is what it, okay. Now I like talking in my classroom, I like collaboration, but when they're learning, I like it to be quiet. A student just asked me to use the bathroom. Usually when that happens, I lose the classroom at least a good three minutes because they're watching her go out and all this stuff. I get to start again. She walks up and nobody, nobody sees it. They're working at their own pace. I'm able, during this lesson, it was, I was trying to assess whether or not they knew how to find this level of line. So I sat down with students who I knew were having trouble, the rest of the class was moving forward, and I was actually able to do that, which is really cool, because if I do that in a regular classroom, if I've given them an assignment, they're going to talk. They're going to get off task for the most part, no matter how good I am at classroom management. So this is a really cool thing for me. I'm just walking around trying to assess in classrooms. These are reasons why I do it. Talk about that. It creates more time for learning and then less time. So a lesson that would normally take me a 90-minute class period, I can extend it into 15 or 30 minutes. I don't have the distractions of having to sharpen a pencil, getting called down. Anything that happens in the classroom, students are still learning. Students are learning at their own pace. I've got those high-level learners, and I also have the low-level learners. So the ones to go ahead and get the lesson done, I've got something else for them to do. So I'm taking them, and they're not just sitting there getting bored and getting in trouble, they're getting a higher grade, they're moving on to more difficult material. And then for those to be more helpful, I'm actually there to actually give it to them. This is the best part, I think Miss Um said, came and visited my class, and she said, you know, it's kind of like you're in your own teacher assistant, and that's what it feels like. They've got one-to-one instruction throughout the class period, and they have me walking around to check for understanding as well. So instead of 30 or 35 to one like I've got now, it's more like one-to-one. So things that I'm going to be doing, I've already shared with colleagues in my department, got three or four other teachers that are using this, trying to help them get through some of the struggles. It takes a little while at first to get it going, but it gets better as you go. I've already presented at the faculty meeting at our school. I'm thinking about helping some other teachers in the district. I've communicated with them and told them how bad I was about it. I plan on presenting to the state conference next year, and if you notice, it's the way it's going. Anyway, y'all have any questions?
Any questions? Miss Maeve?
I do. I do. I am thrilled.
Good!
I am thrilled, free thinkers.
Yes.
They are free thinkers, and they are not bothering. They are collaborating not only with you, but with each other. No problems, no discipline.
And these kids, I have the ones that are long-term suspended, and you know, they're the tough kids, and I reach them. You know, speaking of which, if they're absent, they can pull this up on their own time. If they're in ISS, they can watch this in ISS. And you know, once we get done with the lessons, we are doing higher-level thinking skills. So if I do this for 30 minutes at the beginning of class, I've got the rest of the class period to actually extend the lesson. I'm excited.
All right. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Tick.
Our votes.
Yes. Yes.
The biggest smile I have is waiting.
Free.
Okay, last way to see. I'm going to call some middle schoolers down for us. From Aiden Middle School. If I could get Iris Mayer, Daphne Mayer, Caroline Congleton, Brianna Moore, Lauren Arnold, Paige Stallings, and Ava Hunt.
Love the green hair.
These ladies are a part of the, one of the Aiden Middle School, or a couple of Aiden Middle School Robotics Teams. Aiden Middle won a recent middle school robotics competition held at Hope Middle two weeks ago. There were more than 100 students who competed from each of our 12 middle schools. Essentially, this goes back to about six weeks ago, when the groups got together for a preliminary competition and tested their robots that they created, which they brought in here, and kind of figured out what worked with them and what did not work, and then went back to the drawing board. On the competition day, they had a chance to, they had an hour and a half to put together the robots and then put them into competition, which was a sumo-style competition, where they had to push the other team's robots out of a five-by-five square, or either capture a cube and put it in a box, and all kinds of complicated things are way over my head. The hope is that the students will take this stuff back to school, explain a little bit of, about what they did with these materials, and maybe inspire some others to become interested in robotics as well at the middle school level. So just wanted to congratulate the ladies for their contribution.
Thank your parents want to get pictures of them. Have them turn, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
There you go. Okay, turn around.
Congratulations. I think you're going in.
Good job, good job. I will. I will, anytime.
They have the clean sweep. They want the whole thing.
All girls, we want it all. That's correct. Got a little small.
Thank you. Wow, it cleaned them out, didn't it?
Okay, at this time, we've got some special recognition. You will close that door, please. Gio? Gio came on the board, let's see, December 1996, and December 2014, 18 years. And presented with great appreciation for 18 years of dedicated service to students and employees at Pitt County Schools. December 1996, December 2014, we thank all you guys and all of your time and spend in helping students and students.
This is sort of bittersweet, actually. It's going to be a big change in my life, but I'm going to miss it. And most, I just want to say what an honor it has been to serve the students and the teachers and the staff of Pitt County Schools. And I hope I've done some good.
You've been on the board since July 2000 through December 2014, that's 14 years, six months. Why? You may feel that you've been very dedicated since six months. So with grateful appreciation for 14 years and six months of dedicated service to students and employees at Pitt County Schools. Six years. Greatful appreciation for six years.
Well, I want to thank the constituents of District 5 for voting for me and electing me when they did, and it was an honor to serve them and the students of Pitt County Schools. And it's been an interesting service to the schools that I've been...
And it's been an interesting service to the schools that I do think that a lot of things have been accomplished. And one thing that I wish that could be accomplished more is that more parents and more, those will consider Pitt County Schools first to educate their children. I know there's a lot of options out there, but I think Pitt County Schools is the best option to educate our children. And I wish more people would consider it first. Hopefully, that'll be done in the future. But thank you for the opportunity to consider Five and all those I serve there. Thank you.
Alright, uh, Christine, December tenth, August to August fourteen, three years and eight months. And with grateful appreciation for three years and eight months, dedicating service to the students and employees of Pitt County Schools. Thank you for what you've done. Appreciate all the work and colors offered.
My service was a whopping perfect comparison to my esteemed colleagues. But if you count all the years I've put in the classroom, I think, I think maybe I've earned this. It, this is the hardest part about the community, is severing these ties. But interestingly enough, I've already encountered people that I knew in Winston-Salem when I taught there for five years. And some of my former students are there, and those, those ties never die. So, I wish you all the very best, and my heart will be with you the whole way.
Looks like you're getting ahead of the women.
No comment on that. I know that.
Motion to approve consent items.
Some moves.
Ms. Counselor, even. Motion and mark second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Uh, new business, we have the EPS committee update. Mark and Cheryl.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Evening.
I'd like to say. Y'all would be nice. We were just talking out there about it to be a little bit strange, the big crowd. Okay, on October the twentieth, twenty fourteen, Educational Program Services held their board committee meeting. Mr. Richard called the meeting's order. There were three topics on the agenda that we discussed. First topic, we discussed two procedures that related to instructional resources and the selection of those. We had had an incident occur at a school where a parent had questioned some of our processes for video being viewed. And so, the board committee thought that it was a good time for us to review that policy. Look at the different policies that pertain to it to determine if any changes need to be made. Uh, we looked at nine-point-four-zero-one dash P. It relates to guidelines for the process of challenging an instructional resource. We reviewed those. We also looked at procedure nine-point-four-zero-one dash P-two, which is the procedure for the use of video recording specifically. And so, we looked at the statements within that procedure, which talks about the ratings that can be viewed with videos in the different grade configurations, elementary school, middle school, and high school. Uh, there was a lot of discussion about those. Uh, Mr. DeCresy added some discussion about when those procedures were originally written, what was the intent beside it, behind it. And after quite much deliberation, it was decided that the procedures that were there had appropriate guidelines that were for public view, that resources could be challenged if they need to be challenged, and the processes were doing that. And then also, we were asked to make sure that the principals were aware of the different guidelines and that they, just sort of pressure force them, so we'll be doing that in the future. The second agenda item, we went through pretty deeply the test scores and the results for Pitt County Schools. We looked at the K-eight data, we looked at the nine-twelve data, and all the data that deals with the accountability of the different schools. And then we discussed the different changes that had been made at the district level pertaining to addressing some of the weaknesses that we saw, some of the concerns that we saw, but also some of the things that were really good with the data. Some of those things, I'm gonna touch on tonight. I'm actually gonna cover the school improvement plan template tonight that we're using and how it can be viewed. Uh, today is the first day that all schools had to have the link to their school improvement plans posted on their website and available to review. They should be already approved and voted on by the staff. And so, I'm gonna go through that in a few minutes. Uh, we also looked at some of the things we're doing with the principals. We're looking at qualities of effective teachers at the book study we're doing every month with the principals. We changed some of the expectations that we've set forth for principals for the instructional rounds process. And I may bring that in a little bit more in-depth later on in a committee meeting about what that entails. Also, we require common formative assessments to be given across grade levels and departments. Schools are having PLCs and the minutes for those, and how do we check? And we're doing training with principals, and how do we look at the effectiveness for those? And then the power standards, which is digging deep into the standards and figuring out the priorities for the different standards, because there's so many that have to be covered, and how long they should be covered. Uh, we talked about how we've changed the format. Our curriculum coaches used to be designated as K-12, and how that's a wide reach for a person to be able to handle. And so, our nine-twelve director deal, Frasier, has gone in and pulled in department chairs that are meeting monthly and looking at the data for their departments, and then bringing them together as a league, like the faculty senate. And so, then that allowed us to take our curriculum coaches to a K-eight level, but it's a program K-eight. We're also, Dr. Jackson and myself are trying to do a five-by-five model, which means we visit five schools every week. And when we go into the schools, we're looking at the things that we've asked the schools to do, which is instructional rounds, PLC minutes, what does their common formative assessment look like? What are they doing with the data from those? How are they addressing weaknesses? And we're doing all right. We haven't, we haven't, we're missing a few as we go along. Like, this is where meetings always start, but we're doing pretty good. But anyway, we looked pretty in-depth at our testing results and had some good points there. The third thing that was on the agenda was really quick. It's, uh, just to let you know that we are presenting next week to the faculty at Bell Hall the idea and concept of a dual immersion program along with a global school. Dual immersion is a small little piece of what a global school would be like, and that's where you have to change back. In respect. And so, to keep, they recommend that to keep that from becoming a have-and-have-nots for kids who are in that program, since you create a whole global school where you're studying all around the world in each grade level. We're actually gonna do a presentation that's with the Bell Hall faculty to see how they feel about it, what their take is on it. Are they committed to possibly going down that road? And then we'll be coming back to the content. So, any questions, Ms. Mayor?
Ms. Counselor?
Uh, Edgecombe County has a global program. And we had a chance to look at that at a meeting recently. And that's one of the best I've heard of, so just wanna check that out too.
I think that the link has already been. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it was excellent.
We've actually visited a school, Hope Elementary and Junior, that has a population similar to Bell Hall. They're global for the dual immersion. No, they don't have a dual immersion, they have a global piece of it. Uh, but we're also looking at a couple more schools. I've moved to the side of the table. And so, we want to take the faculty, we want to do the presentation to the faculty. We're gonna offer the person's trip so they can see what they can imagine. Any other questions?
Okay. Next.
Okay, the second reading for, on page sixteen, student transfers. Uh, this is the second reading for the policy ten-point-one-one-one. If you look on page seventeen, you can read what we read to at the first turn. So, I'm just asking for...
I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve the policy as amended, policy ten-point-one-one-one, student transfers within Pitt County Schools.
I made the motion and Charles seconded. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass.
Last item, school improvement plan. You'll pull out your... I have it on the screen, please try and follow along. I don't wanna do a review for how this works and what you're seeing when you look in and you click on the site of the school. All the schools have websites, and on their website should say something to them that the school improvement plan is. It's in, it's, it's not in your booklet, it is. So, you're looking at a blank one, and then I've asked principals to come in and talk about the different things that's on the goal, okay? So, I'm kinda doing just to let me see the template, because when you go to your specific school, of course, when the community hears this recording, they'll kind of know what to look for. First thing you're gonna see is just their school name. This plan is for the years of fourteen through sixteen. The tab at the bottom, the tablet legend, it's just color-coded for schools to know what tabs they need to fill out. If you're a K-eight school, if it's yellow, all schools have complete that. If it's green, K-eight schools only. Purple, not so. So, that's all the agenda. Page two. It's your vision and mission statement. The Pitt County School's vision and the Pitt County School's mission statement is up there. And then the school will put in their vision and mission statement. Page three, it's the district goals. Each and another, you see the district goal, district goal number one. Every student at Pitt County Schools graduates in high school prepared to work for further education and citizenship. And it goes along with the state school goal. And that is every student in North Towne Public Schools is to graduate from high school prepared for work for the education and citizenship. So, that's how our district goal stands to our state goal. And then, after that comes data. Now, if you're looking, and this is the K-H student data. This is for your constituents that may want to see how a school is performing. So, for read three D, the first category there that you have is K through three, thirteen, fourteen, the percentage proficiency. Proficiency for all, but not a good block, and a bad student. Every year, the data will come out. And then you have, down here, you have the E-Vos, which you can tell you whether or not they're, whether or not they're worth it. So, the red, green, blue. And then over here to the side of that is the actual game percentage. So, it's negative, positive. You know, a school could be green, but if they're negative game, then that means they are closer to the red than they are to the blue. If it's positive and they're closer to the blue, that means it's good. And then you got reading, then you have math, which is E-Vos, and then percentage proficiency. And then you go into the math. Then we have student engagement data. This is where you have the number of students who are prepared to attend unexcused classes, promotion retention data, that's the percentage of the rate. And out of schools suspension. So, you can go to the school improvement plan and find out all the data that you need to find out for your particular school each year. After that comes the technology readiness data. That is the number of students tested, and then right beside it gives us the devices that we've had fifty years ago to online testing. That's not coming in good. But we'll wanna make sure, do we have enough devices to do this? After that comes, is your, all your high school data. High school data, graduation rate for three years, the acceptance rate. If it's greater than eight unexcused classes, that's within policy. End of course growth, you have E-Vos, and then the effect number, whether or not it's positive or negative. Biology, English two, and math one. Then you have the proficiency rating, biology, English two, math one. And you have links on the other page, you see the action accountability side of it. So, we've got a good explanation for what we're looking at. The S.I.C., school work ease percentage, and then out of schools. The school budget summary is just...
Do the, the, we can, yeah. That's what you got. That's the coincidence of this right here.
We're not hiding anything, all out there, your constituents.
Alright. So, no, well, no, for me, that's right. For me, that's getting better from staying in there.
Next page is the school budget summary. This tells, uh, tells you how much part of one dollars a school gets, also the local dollars, state dollars, and the immediate. And then we get to goal one. Now, there's five goals that's gonna correlate from the school to the district and then to the state, okay? And the way this is set up, is you see the district goal. Every student at Pitt County Schools graduates in high school prepared for work for the education and citizenship. Then the school, in that yellow quadrant, will write your school goal. The blue is the objectives that they're gonna meet in different ways. And then the pink is how are you gonna make, make that goal. The funding source, and then the two questions they have to answer at the beginning of the question. What data are you gonna use to show that the action steps implemented to fidelity? No, it's correct. And then how are you gonna determine whether or not the action steps led to the progress or the goal? Those are the two things you have to know. And what happens? What happens is each principal at the school will fill in.
Teen, the teen.
That's where you're, you're filling in. So, for goal number one, I asked some of the principals to come up and just give a sample of what theirs looks like. So, goal number one. I won from Hope.
One question.
Goal number two is Marty Baker from Aiden Britain.
Okay, go ahead. I got one question. Um, on page is proud to where we are now.
Alright.
Uh, you're giving a lot of data, which is, is real good. I'd like to be able to go one place and look at all this data by year. Is there anything that would say what the average quality or what the state average is? Those numbers that we look at, can we somehow fix ourselves somehow? It just tells us where we are.
The E-Vos data. The E-Vos data will show you a comparison between the school and the district.
Yeah, if you're, if you're making a... But you're right, I haven't, I haven't listened to the yesterday.
This is, this is stupid, it's good.
Alright, I'm gonna ask, Mr. Baker's gonna, we go two for Aiden Britain. Uh, goal three is Mr. Lacher from Central. Go four is Frank Sinclair from Farm Hill. And then Sheen Payton, so go five, all cut. They're gonna walk through all type of goals. She will tell you what she's gonna do in goal one.
Sweet, Jennifer Hopson from Pitt County Schools. So, the district goal for one was every student at Pitt County graduates in high school prepared for work for further education and citizenship. So, what that translates for us at Hope Middle School is to prepare students to be college and career-ready. And you know that they increase the EOG or integrate achievement levels, one through five. College and career-ready students are those that are scoring level four and five. They're the ones that are demonstrating solid and superior command of knowledge. So, our objectives are to increase the number of proficient students on reading EOGs by three percent. Objective two, increase the number of students proficient on math EOGs and EOCs by three percent. And then to increase the number of proficient students on... And then to increase the number of proficient students on science E O Gs by three percent. And our action steps, and tell for, for pretty much all three of them, the remediation services that we offer at school. This year, we extended our homeroom period so that our, um, students are able to meet in and check in with teachers if they have questions regarding their life course assignments. We are also doing common assessments and benchmarks, which is committed with, that the district is asking us to do. And we are also using accelerated math and accelerated reading in our school. And then, of course, we have our P O Cs meeting weekly, um, to adjust curriculum with the power standards, create common assessments, and also analyze the data from your students' success. And we do not so much assessing some of those assessments that we're dealing. At the bottom, as we talk about our beginning of the year monitoring, what data will be used to determine if our action steps that implement fidelity? Uh, we are using data that we're gaining from, that's our STAR testing, which helps students participate in, that's something that we require three times a year, maybe middle of the year. We're also monitoring our students' accelerated and accelerated, um, math and reading performance. We've already done their previous E O G data, as well as students' E V O S data, and they're, the different, their state. Saying that they should be checking that. Then whether that's getting up there, and whether the action steps leading progress, we, we're monitoring that, and that's why we're doing accelerated math. Our common assessment condition, we're already integrated. And we are looking at our P O C minutes, we are also attending our P O C meetings, um, and basically using data and recognition.
One, one question.
More.
Yes, down for it, B O Y is, and I may have missed it, how will you determine whether the action steps lead to progress toward the goal? Who did you have for that one?
Uh, we are certainly continuing to monitor our accelerated math and accelerated reading. We are also doing common assessments, we're doing related, you know, grade levels, and the P O C group too. Um, they're doing the assessment of students, they get that, they get data, maybe need adjustments in infrastructure, um, either remediation, or extension, or continuing to work with students. But also, basically, decisions within our school, one of our focuses this year at our school is to increase nonfiction reading, and to increase students' book levels in accelerated reading program. And so we have some different. There are six grade law, seven grade law, and eight grade law, and then we're also acknowledging students and regulars.
Our objective is to focus on increasing our E O C scores. Setting our professional learning community meetings during the semester. Sometimes in high schools, that's very difficult to do, to be freed up, uh, next period on Friday, for free, E O C courses, and then each for a period of time. Uh, dedicating time, um, to really, uh, make a difference, and go through both of these, first one by two percent. The teachers will maintain professional learning communities throughout the semester, and work elaborately, uh, to score students' work, to create assessments, to discuss teaching practices. Basically, that is using the P O C to create the common assessments, so we have two teachers, teachers by all of them, that give the common assessment. Next piece of that, which would be under that, would be how are we using the data? To utilize E V O S data, benchmark data, uh, test data, to use for, by the creation of common, common assessments. Backwards design model, which means that we're gonna be creating assessment plans. After we create the assessment, which means we're gonna be teaching on our, um, these, these, and that's skills. We have an answer, no question, that you can see on the computer. In addition, um, we feel that attendance is also important, um, of several subjects, of, of our, our building model. Our high school is at ninety-four percent of testing, people make sure that we're ninety-five percent or higher. So attendance was very important to us as a school, uh, improvement team. And that we created a graduation administrative team that will look at attendance data, and what we've done this year, in a nutshell, is that we've had students, two, three, five, and eight. They don't have to sign the attendance form that is made, um, and people go home with their signature. So that makes the students accountable for their attendance. We've been through the breakdown of our graduation coach, coach, which has been at the end of the year, of the school, uh, and a great day. We're gonna continue to monitor, uh, progress, uh, beginning of the year, which includes obviously the benchmark item analysis, um, lesson plans, P O C records, attendance records, uh, and certain of the letters. And how we determine whether the action steps were for the goal, including common assessment, certainly both on common assessments and E O C growth, we look at the results. Most definitely, at the end, we keep a message, but also all along.
Any questions? How many, is this your first year of not meeting tested at ninety-five percent?
It's the first year of my knowledge, if we have, usually we're at ninety-five percent.
Do your teachers, do you have a common planning time for the core?
Um, for the E O C core, I think, because the model this year, this year will be a, uh, a group, maybe that will, that's your focus on.
How often do your P O Cs meet?
Every five.
There.
Have you done anything that, for the personalized education, have you implemented anything towards the guidance? At its top first?
Um, one of the things that we have, we have a graduation coach. A graduation coach helps in a number of ways, which are, for our guidance council, gives them additional support, of what's nice things about. And things that, uh, so you can focus in on which parts of the objective the students are missing, that's what the teachers can focus on. How am I gonna reteach, or what are we gonna do to make sure students handle certain students? We also get our councils involved with that, um, primarily our graduation coaches, certainly the first line, and then certainly we can get our.
You want to have?
Thank you.
Alright, thanks.
Goal three, at all schools, if every student at Hackaway has an excellent educator every day. Our first objective is to improve and retain ninety-five percent of our beginning teachers that are higher at Hackaway. Action steps are, um, that we post through beginning teacher chat and session throughout the year. These sessions provide for the teachers with information that's relevant to our management, instruction, strategy, curriculum instruction, and school culture. We encourage them to be also frequently with their mentor, and the community at Hackaway. Second action step to accomplish this goal is to continue to have our teachers meet deeply in their professional learning communities. Teachers will meet deeply as a professional learning community for eighty-six consecutive minutes in grades A four, and seven, five minutes after school, teachers can breathe five, eight verticals. Teachers will discuss student needs and determine rigorous, relevant instruction strategies, and keep the needs of all students. Strategies will be adjusted as necessary based on student performance, and power standards, and faith. Outside consultants, administration, instructional coaches, intervention specialists, and remediation teachers will meet regularly with teachers at each grade level to discuss student needs and determine target interventions, as well as practice. Objective three is to provide high-quality professional development in our three school-wide open areas, which are smart construction, active, or pedaling, by your foster critical. Teachers participate monthly in serious professional development, often in school level, these three areas, sessions will be led by administration, instructional coaches, teacher leaders. Smart construction will consist of guided reading, guided math, six A teachers, attended by training, by, by from the beginning to beyond, they got new math training, also. Guided reading training will be provided by teachers and teacher assistants for eight sessions throughout the building. Data that can be used to determine if these strategies are implemented with fidelity, we get our beginning teacher chat and session, E O C minutes, professional development session. Lesson plan is A D M, our data, and data notebooks, and we can determine these strategies, help us to be, towards a goal, like you say, um, structure strategies, and then you can construct it. Data, benchmark C F A.
Questions, Sean?
I, I didn't.
Thank you. Goal four?
Um, I did have goal four, um, that states that Farmer Middle School will have up-to-date financial, business, and technology systems to serve the students, parents, and educators, protecting mirrors and digital. And what we primarily decide to do at Farmer Middle School is to focus on the technology, business, and technology of the goal, um, and that's to bolster communication with all our parents, um, so they may be more involved in things that are going on in our community. So our first objective in doing that was to increase and implement, uh, technology systems for parent access. So we are going to create a new school webpage, uh, in which we have contacted Red Heart Digital to do that, along with, uh, creating a new school app for smartphone users, again, through Red Heart Digital, we, we do that as well. Um, and to constant app, or to have constant availability for parents to sign up for, um, to use a parent mobile access, and them to have access to the trays, and the things, and things of that nature. Um, our second objective was that every teacher in our school would have a webpage. Um, increasingly, our parents of the former community have, have asked, you know, how can we get access to resources to refer that Mr. Laster, um, and, um, this problem mentioned, like A R, A M, they want to access that information, and so, um, we have asked every one of our teachers to have a webpage. Um, and so we have, are going to provide teachers with professional development on how to create their webpages, um, and their webpages actually are now, um, accessible, uh, as of October thirty first, that's Friday, so you can go to our webpage, um, our website, click on the teachers, and they all have webpages. And so our last objective was to have, basically distribute state and local instructional funds, um, by our school leadership team. In other words, we're having, um, every grade level submit their needs to us regarding what, what needs they need, uh, to help improve the instruction in the fashion for students, um, so our content areas are submitting that to us, um, and so we're analyzing their needs, according to the person that we have received, and then we're gonna allocate. Uh, what data will be used to determine if the action steps were implemented with fidelity, again, we have, uh, taken inventory of media center regarding what can we do to help, uh, teachers make a webpage, uh, website, how to create a webpage, we realized, we didn't have the, 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 to do that, so we contracted out, uh, through Red Heart Digital, and they actually took us through every step of that process of what it's gonna look like, and so it's an interesting and fun thing to do, um, and then we're also going to have parents who will sign up, and we'll, throughout the course of this year. Um, how will we determine whether the action steps led to progress toward the goal? Um, basically, it increases parent involvement in school activities, um, making sure our parents know what's going on at Farmer Middle School, so they go a part of the culture and what's going on in our building, so that's what they're using, um, to assess that.
Questions? Thank you. Five.
I'm gonna focus on goal five, and for goal five, we are doing, uh, every student at Walco's will be healthy, safe, and responsible. For our last school year, we had a sixty-one percent decrease in our out-of-school suspensions at Walco's. Um, so this year, we're gonna continue to focus on our out-of-school suspensions, and we would like to decrease them by two more percent this school year. Uh, we are implementing flagships this school year, that's an idea that we got from Ron Clark Academy, we are doing, um, they call them houses at Ron Clark Academy, but we're calling them flagships, since we are the Pirates. We are divided into four teams in our school, um, so this is going about, uh, approach of discipline, uh, not just individual, but a team approach, because we're trying to build more community at our school, uh, by getting parents and students and everybody on board, on board. Every staff member, including custodial, including our cafeteria, are on a flagship, and students can earn points for academic achievement, and also for showing respect and responsibility. They were rewarded at every nine weeks, uh, we wrote a Perkins grant that we received, and at the end of the nine weeks, our students receive a off-campus, um, venture, and actually, uh, Maupunikio, that's the flagship who won last nine weeks, is going to be going bowling, and so they're gonna take the party for that to go off-campus. And we really think that's important for us and our students, because they don't get to do some things, um, off-campus and be rewarded. Like I said, we're divided into four teams in our school, uh, we also received, um, funding from Quinny Church, and from Equipment Plus, um, for T-shirts for every single student and every single staff member on Walco, at Walco's as well, to show our pride. We've also beefed up our Walco's expectations, um, our teachers, we do, we are not a. Oh, possibly. See, we're not a P B I S school, however, our teachers are really, I'm sorry, um, involved in our discipline, um, they went through the whole process of going through all of the disciplines, um, that our students have, and they went through and tiered them themselves, and came up with consequences, so they did a lot of this stuff as P B I S. Uh, we took it a step further by making a video to show our students, we show it every ten, or the first ten days of school, and then every month, we show them about how we do things at Walco's, um, from walking, um, down the breezeway, to how to act in the, um, cafeteria, every, everything. Uh, we've increased it this school year by showing what respect is, and how to use good manners, we're really working on please and thank you, um, and also looking at one another when you talk to each other, um, trying to build those self-confidence skills, so we've taken a step further by making videos and showing things like that, and we're using our students to do that as well. Um, our next, um, goal objective is, um, reduce the number of out-of-school, excuse me, unexcused absences by two percent, and we're using our flagships for that as well, rewarding points and things for our students. It's very amazing how much a point can do for a student, you would believe, uh, to say you're gonna, I'm gonna give you a point, point, how much that builds, um, the students, they look for that. Um, and also, we are, um, streamlining our communication, um, parent communication on absences, and making sure, um, we are doing a little bit better job of making sure that everybody knows, um, the processes for absences by sending home letters, and getting our social worker more involved, and home visits, and things like that that we need. And, um, also reducing this number of students in parties by doing the same thing, by making sure that we have, sending out our letters like we need to, doing our alert mails, um, social work visits, and also, if we need to, suspensions, if we have to go that way. Um, we are, the data that we're using to make sure that we're doing visibility, um, we have, um, created at Walco's a electronic discipline referral, um, that is, instead of a, a discipline referral being, um, with teacher writing it out, it sits in the box for a little bit, it automatically goes straight to myself or my assistant principal as soon as the teacher has that issue. So automatically, I see exactly what needs to be done, and what's, action steps the teacher has done, we can go ahead and move on it quickly, so, um, we can look at those, um, daily, or, you know, every minute or whatever. And also, Power Schools, looking at the discipline suspensions that we have. How will I determine, or how will we determine if the action steps led to progress towards the goal, if we've had a decrease in the absence, the number of students who are absent, and also a decrease in our out-of-school suspensions.
Any questions? So you're taking this case?
Sixty-one percent.
Sixty-one percent. What, what I, no, this doesn't matter. Maybe so far, sometimes. They get reduced. They start getting more calls from parents, uh, classes, child, continue to act, which we have, but after much, I've not gotten one call. Those calls also teach you to stop. I've not gotten one call back. Break up. Having, having worked, I guess I should be talking with OC about this, but having worked for a Fortune five hundred company, um, setting goals can make you lie awake at night, because when I look here, I see a target date, six, one, twenty fifteen, and I've heard a lot of good things. Not to say it won't be done, because I've, from what I've seen, we've got a great team here working at Pick County. And I just wanna let you know. And I just wanna let you know, because I've heard a lot, that if the number you see here may be twelve now, but it may be nine, we're at your disposal. Because I have seen, I have heard tonight, a lot of aggressive goals, and we wanna make, make them. Thank you. Anyone else?
I'd just like to say thank you for your hard work at Walco's. She's a good principal.
Yes. Appreciate it.
Thank you. This is a great job. Let's finish out real quick. The next section is for Title One School Room. Basically, Sandra Morris um meets with the Title One Schools, and they take your Title One Plan and they categorize it the components of the Title One Plan, and how it fits into the goal.
Thank you.
Thank you. Safe School Plan is the next section. This is not the true Safe School Plan, because we can't get detailed and accomplish the goals and stuff. But basically, um the State Board requires us to include portions of our Safe School Plan, so it just is responsible. Some of the goals, you'll see on the second page of it, you know, our goal is to reduce out-of-school suspensions as a district by five percent. They may change that, you heard Gina say hers was three percent, appreciate such a big drop, but and how they're gonna do that? Um, indicators of success. And then the last part is the confession of the day of our awful pain and success. So you can see that uh P B I S is something that we expect schools to be working on. Gina did not want, she would request that not be just vague in the name P B I S, it was the staff, it's kind of a bad connection with the first time. She's doing a lot of the components in the column. The next page, which is all third grade is reading and above grade by the one time to one. This is a requirement from the State because of free to achieve. And so we went ahead and wrote in the objectives for the school. Only the K five and the A H schools have to have this in the plan. That's to increase your efficiency in reading, in starting first and second grade, and then they put in the action. The State to be here during the K five case, if you have any questions, does that read to achieve? The next page is the duty free. This is a, you'll see at the top, it says State requirement, all school improvement plans are required to have this. And it's basically how we try to make sure our people get focused, ready, and and duty free lunch period as possible. There's a second statement of that, and it says, none of the judgment of supervision for children. So a lot of our elementary schools, the teachers are in there, but there's plans, there's trials out there on how we can get them help. And then the last, um, this section, State Staff, I deliberately put that green block up there just because I want everybody that looks at this to know, we don't get any state allotment for staff development. And even though the State requires to have a plan to do staff, they don't give us any money, so that's kind of a fooling you. And then the la- the last page is the signature page, which is, you will see here, fourteen fifteen, how many approved it? How many did not approve it? Principal signature will be there, and the local board chair approval. Basically, my last one did tonight, just accept the school's little plan, because I know you're not gonna bother with it, everyone. Um, but just accept the format that we have and what we've been working on, school through the team signs it. And then the last page, which is the waivers of requests to be from money. Any questions there about the template? And I do ask you.
Our motion?
We approve the template.
Thank you, Mr. Falls. Mr. Moore seconded. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? We approve. Thanks, Chairman. Abend you?
Thank you.
Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we uh met during our usual time. We did have a forum, Mr. Chairman, and uh we discussed uh those two items that you can see that are the force tonight. And that's my
Good evening. We did meet a couple weeks ago to review the uh two thousand fourteen fifteen budget resolution and the budget calendar. I'll I'll quickly go through this over the next forty-five minutes.
Hey, you see this? It's not gonna be here, it's gonna be up there.
I've got to do that, sir. Our total budget uh for Pitt County Schools for two thousand fourteen fifteen four years, approximately two hundred twenty-nine point three million, with the operating budget comprising approximately ninety-seven total, two hundred seventy-five million. The operating budget contains both state, local and federal dollars intended to run the day-to-day operations of the school system. With state appropriations making approximately two-thirds of that total. Overall, we received with state, local and federal dollars, approximately eighty-seven hundred dollars per student. There are two primary characteristics of our overall budget. First of all, we're highly invested in people, approximately eighty-four percent of our total budget comes from salaries and benefits. And then if you look at how the budget is being utilized, approximately eighty-one out of every one hundred dollars is going directly into the classroom to uh serve our students. And looking at the highlights of this year's budget, it was kinda hard to to get down to just a few of those highlights. But um one though, you may not know of, which has an article there to discuss, which is that past quarter, the twelfth hour of the state budget, the legislature approved uh a a uh a new way to formulate the budget whereby future budgets will not be based off of student A D and growth of students. State uh allotments are based off of the number of students that attend public schools. And each year, as student grow, uh student increases in state North Carolina, so so too does the state budget for education. This requirement has been removed, so that the state budget will no longer grow as students grow. So that means that a school system could increase one student, stay on the student season, not receiving up one additional down. And that we will have to be uh fighting amongst all other issues within that state budget, just to meet the increase in funding, the increase in student growth. So that came in at the last uh twelfth hour, and again, you have an article there for the state budget, so we'll get more detail about that. But that will change the foundation of each of the budget it stays during the future. So a percent increase in teacher salaries, which is supplemented, rolled into into that salary schedule. Hundred twenty-nine point nine million dollar reduction in uh funding for teacher assistants. Overall funding for teacher assistants has been reduced by over two point four million dollars in Pitt County alone since the year two thousand eight, two thousand nine, we've lost approximately seventy position, uh teacher assistant positions here in the school system. Student ratio, uh teacher form funding ratios were adjusted, so that we received approximately twenty additional allotted teacher positions from the state. This year, we're allotted one thousand eighty point five regular classroom teachers. Just in the year two thousand eight nine, we were actually allotted one thousand ninety-one uh state allotted teacher positions. And you say that again, back in two thousand eight nine, we were allotted from state North Carolina, one thousand ninety-one uh teacher positions. Down eleven, where we are currently. In fact, we've actually lost state allotted positions, approximately twenty-three positions since two thousand eight, two thousand nine, here within Pitt County alone. We are allotted one thousand eighty point five, but yet we've allocated out from schools, one thousand one hundred seventy regular classroom teachers. So we're funding approximately nine teacher positions above the state lock formula. And it's just not in the form of regular classroom teachers, but we, in total, we are funding over one hundred seventy-three teacher positions above the state lock. So that'd be regular classroom teachers, T C teachers, A G teachers, L E P, A G, C T E, and so on. How are we doing it? Through the use of low wealth and local appropriations. Five point six million dollars in low wealth funding and over three million dollars in local funding, in the local budget and special revenue budget.
Hold on, Mike. Few minutes ago, you mentioned something about the allotment had had dropped. You said the allotment part had dropped, but you, the student population has gone up.
That's right.
So everybody needs to
Yes, that's right. Our actual funding for uh teacher assistance has reduced by two point four million. Our actually stated allotted classroom teachers, instructional support, and assistant principal positions have reduced by twenty-three positions over the last seven years. That's a bit of time when our student population is growing by over seven hundred students.
That's what we needed here.
If they adjust the uh formula for that, is that how they did it, or is that a foster board type thing?
Yes, the uh the fund for bank teachers, let's do that again. The State will tell you that they're still funding teacher assistants in grades K three, but if you go back and look at the year two thousand eight, two thousand nine, they were funding a thousand dollars in teacher assistance for every K three student. Now, it's funding a little bit more than seven hundred dollars for K three students. So yes, they can say they're funding K three free, but they're reducing the appropriation of student in order to basically cut overall around two hundred million dollars from the state budget. Low wealth, we know that we're highly leveraged on using low wealth funding, instructional, classroom teachers. We did see an increase of over a million dollars in low wealth funding this year based off of the low wealth formula. That becomes uh a gift from the Lord above, given the fact that we requested one point two million dollar increase in local appropriations, but only saw an actual five hundred dollars, five hundred thousand dollar increase. So our county appropriations came in seven hundred thousand dollars lower than what we had proposed, just to be able to maintain the current level of operations in these schools. That doesn't consider the million dollar increase in local funding that we requested in order to fund the one percent increase in teacher salary and to fund that three hundred thousand dollars in staff development, which the state is no longer planning as well. As you can see from this graph, our first student funding by the county dropped from the twenty-fifth position back in two thousand four up to the forty-fifth position for the two thousand fourteen school year. Now, I'm still, I'm waiting data any day from the budget tax survey to see where this ranks for the two thousand fifteen. But my educated guess is that it will be uh less than a position. And you can see that we continue to lie below both the state average and the average refunding for the top fifteen school systems in the state. When we look at our fund balance, our local fund balance stands at approximately four point four million dollars, with three point four million designated for one-time projects. That includes the likes of the transportation facility, nine hundred and three thousand dollars. Have uncompleted projects within the facility, surplus of approximately over six hundred thousand dollars. And we have dollars allocated for safety and security. We have the technical task force, uh finish out a one-to-one initiative for several of our middle schools. We have STEM lab implementation, giving three hundred thousand dollars for staff development in the state. That we're having to take coming out of our fund balance, and that itself can be sustained. And we also have various carryovers that we carry forward from one year to the next, as schools build up um their supplies for the next year. If you look at our local budget, it's pretty much split fifty fifty between instructional programming and system-wide support services. Always take a look at this to be able to go out to our community and show this is what we're doing with our local budget to help enhance and supplement the state allocation for instruction in Pitt County. Finally, this year is pretty much set, and kinda go through this every year and look at how much we can wish. We do have a balanced budget, and as uh the State requires, uh we must balance our operations, we cannot spend more than we take in. And uh so no, we need to worry about this current fiscal year, even as tough as it was, we do have a balanced budget. But automatically, we're looking forward to the two thousand fifteen sixteen school year. And that begins here tonight with the approval of the budget resolution, the budget calendar, that carries through to the spring, to the uh long session, where various budget scenarios will be brought forward through the legislature, as well as a negotiated budget with the county commissioners. Um, doing something a little bit different than I've done before in the past, I'm actually taking what I consider to be our our top ten uncertainties going into the next budget year, and kinda breaking them down one by one. And over the next several months, you will be um seeing various pieces of documentation that kinda breaks down the uncertainties how they could affect our operation in the next year and future of the year. We started out a couple weeks ago by reviewing charter schools, and the impact that could have on our operations. If the uh projected enrollment in the two charter schools comes with tuition, that was included within the applications submitted in front of public instruction, we could be moving up to five hundred students in the next couple of years, which would be another five hundred dollars for appropriations in schools. At your seat, I have funding for teacher assistants and a break standing further. The information that is discussed is presented from the body of the presentation. Again, over two point four million dollar reduction in funding for teacher assistants in the county. I think what you are seeing while looking at that that information, is that uh teacher assistants are pretty much being eradicated. I don't hear with you from the schools, but across the state. That again is to set the tone for the type of uh discussion we'll be hearing on our state leadership as we move through the long session. I have to remind the board that this year's short session basically sets up a whole entire month based off of um putting basically teacher assistants within the middle of negotiations for salary increases for teachers, which is a wholly different kind of discussion you could have, but you'll be hearing more about that over the next few minutes. So I look forward to be able to supply you guys with important information about each one of these issues. Basically, allow us to help um base our platform moving forward into the next long session.
Sheriff, it's P A thing, case members will discuss, obligated to make the motion to accept that we approve the two thousand fourteen fifteen budget resolution. I'm only approving that and the two thousand fifteen sixteen budget calendar.
Second. Made the motion, Mark seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right.
Okay.
That'll be mine. Okay, we approved. Anything else? Thank you, Mike.
We both, Mike.
I just
Mark has some.
Michael, I just wanted to say, thank you for putting this information out there. The thing I would ask, we all have figured this information out, some of us even before this presentation tonight, because the numbers have not been adding up. But the thing we continue to hear from our local elected representatives is, particularly in their campaign literature, is that they've protected the classroom, they've protected classroom teaching positions, they've increased funding for education, they've given a seven percent raise. The thing that's most troubling to me is, where is the media in terms of writing about this and putting this information forward in terms of what the real factual data is? It's not there. And that's what's troubling is, is that we need to put this information out in terms of what's false and what's reality. Numbers don't lie in terms of what we're having to deal with.
I know you're in, I would like to make one comment about that. I brought for myself, went last week to present to the the chambers, issues committee. And in the process of doing so, that we showed them a basically a a survey that had been done, a poll that showed that funding for education in state North Carolina had reduced by over like eight hundred dollars for students over the last six, seven years. And I had no idea where that information came from, and we could share that with me, and I just presented that to to the group. And it ranked every single state in all fifty states. And we ranked one of the highest for our production funding for education. And we tried to explain, I can't just have it done, but I don't know where to begin. But what I can show you is that within Pitt County schools, our funding has dropped by over five, five million dollars with concerns to teacher assistance, parent custody, um instructional supplies, textbooks. That doesn't consider the fact that we lost approximately two position, instructional positions from where we were back in two thousand eight nine school year, with our growth in enrollment of seven hundred students. And the mere fact, if you look at the two thousand eight nine salary schedule for an eight-year teacher, they're basically making more than they would from the current salary schedule for an eight-year teacher. So that's, and you can't argue those facts, so it's that's a hard
One of the things that I found was interesting, if I can just one second, is in in some research I was looking at just last night, state of Kentucky, in eleven, twelve school year, was spending eleven thousand, six hundred and some odd dollars per A D M in their funding. And here we are in Pitt County, probably one of the more wealthy areas excluding the the Triad and and Triangle and so on, but we're spending eight thousand dollars in 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 our area per pupil, and I know they're poor areas, certainly in North Carolina, they can't afford it from their local appropriations. And of course, when we think of Kentucky, and not bringing any disparity to Kentucky, but we certainly don't think of Kentucky as being a wealthy area. How is it that our state has gone so backwards in such a short period of time, and yet we have our elected leaders from our How is it that our state has gone so backwards in such a short period of time, and yet we have our elected leaders from our community saying what they've done for education, and it should be what they've done to education.
You want to comment to that?
I think I said.
Jill.
I mean, the only thing to say about that is tomorrow's the day to hold them accountable. Um, our elected, our elected officials who created this budget and have been doing it for the last several years, tomorrow's the day of reckoning, and let's hope that they.
Well, and the one last thing, the one last thing I would say is, I found it interesting that the governor was talking about the state of the condition of the Albemarle building. In terms of his recruitment efforts, he was looking at the ratty carpet. I wish he would take the opportunity to look around some of our poorer school buildings. And certainly, we're even more better off here in Pitt County than some other areas, where there are schools that would be better off with no roof. That, uh, in terms of the leaks that they have to deal with, the mold, the worn-out furniture. I mean, seriously, where has he been?
Can you answer that? You call it. And find out where he's been. All right, Jill.
And let's remember, it is not just our elected officials on the state level, folks. You're talking about buildings, you're talking about maintaining and running our facilities, that is the Pitt County responsibility.
Anyone else?
Say that it includes, uh, probably education, because of, that, uh, parents of those age kids. That makes a difference. I'm gonna tell you, that's, that's why I'm not okay with that.
Yeah, it is. All right, Mayor, and Mr. La.
Dr. Jackson, please. Are y'all doing today?
I'm better now. That did.
Um, the human resources committee met on October twenty-eighth, and we discussed several items. I'm gonna save one item for the la- for last, because it leads into the draft policy in your book. Okay, so, but I will, uh, start out with the hearing process. We are in, in the process of working with the state to update some policies regarding allowing, uh, staff employees, missionair classified employees to have a hearing before the board. We are looking at several districts, again, several examples, so that we will have enough information to present to our committee and a couple of changes that would be required in policy. So I just wanted to, um, do that update, then we talked about that, and we're in the process of allowing, kind of hearing, and how that is a, uh, in a piece of money. We have the university, they're talking about the Affordable Care Act. Regarding the Affordable Care Act, the latest information we received was from the retirement system. And the retirement system finally came out and stated that they will drop retirees that go beyond a hundred thirty hours per month. So we are constantly, with the help of finance department and the people in my department, monitoring hours for our retirees that are coming back. These are our people that help us with remediation, there's some of our substitutes, and we are working with them because on the humanistic side, we don't want anyone to have to change their health benefits, because they're unaware of how many hours they're working. Now, please understand that this is separate from their salary cap. This is now what we consider to be a benefit cap. So they would, if they were working over a hundred, uh, hundred thirty hours a month, they would be dropped from the retirement system's benefit plan and offer a RON's plan at a cost, which has less coverage than their present plans that we mentioned that. At this point, we will be meeting in, on next week with myself, Mr. Cowan, uh, members of my staff and members of the finance staff to sit down and look at this final lookback period information. Because we finished the first lookback period to see if there are people that are at risk, and also substitutes analyzing that as well. So this is a constant, um, process that's been put before superintendents to discuss. All districts across the state are discussing this, and it is centered around, um, the discussions with these, uh, in all the camps.
And I had something that Delila didn't say. This is wreaking havoc with our substitute, our long-term and short-term substitute availability.
We are, we are working daily on our high days, at nine to five, because, um, different things are occurring. We have had to fill up to forty-seven positions, and each day we have schools that are without a substitute, which requires our teacher assistants and classroom teachers have to cover classes when there's no substitute. So it has been something that we're monitoring. On a weekly basis, we have classes that are not filled, and of course, our retirees are saying, I can't work, because I don't want to risk losing my benefits that I have present. And I can understand that as someone who may be in the middle of some form of treatment or something that requires them to have a certain coverage, and then their coverage will have to change. So we are constantly monitoring this. We also talked about classified salary study. Uh, we today emailed to our personnel administrative representative, the survey that was sent out to a hundred fifteen districts about classified employees. We're looking at, uh, bus drivers, child nutrition workers, assistants, all classified employees, to make sure that we as state schools have our, um, policies and procedures of pay in line with other districts. And also looking at other incentives that may be possible for our classified employees to receive. What example was, would we possibly send employees who are receiving a bachelor's degree to, as a reward for going further in their education? So that's just one sample of what we're gonna be asking. What are the different things that districts across North Carolina do to, um, accept their classified employees? So that study should be coming out, uh, we sent it to her on today. Hopefully she can send it out to our group on tomorrow, and we'll have that information to start for our next HR committee meeting. The calendar committee will meet on November the sixth, which is Thursday, and that committee was approved by the, um, HR committee. We have principals, parents, teachers, um, administrators, board member, we have different people that are on the calendar committee that will help us build the fifteen, sixteen calendar. This has to be done by February, so it can be a power school to build the maximum schedule, so that will be up and forthcoming as well. Um, the last thing that I want to focus on is a draft policy that you will see on page forty-two in your book, and this is from legislation, of course, that was done this summer in the general assembly. It was to come in effective, uh, effective November first, as a matter of fact. Today is November the second.
Third?
Yes. So it's now two days in effect. And basically, what we've done in this policy is lift it right from the legislation that was conducted by the general assembly this summer. And it's based on allergic reactions, and the basis of the policy is that we must have designated trained school personnel. And to give you a little bit of background, um, Dr. Morrow with the health department is working with our nurse manager, Ms. Tara Joiner, and all of our twenty school nurses, to get them trained. And that Dr. Morrow will be writing a prescription to each of those school nurses, so the prescriptions go directly to the nurse. We felt like that was better to go to the nurse as the person that is a qualified medical professional, and so that way we'll be ensuring that it gets into every school. From that, two people will be trained in each school to administer the EFNF in, if it is needed in an emergency. And when we look at the policy, it talks about there's at least two pens in every school located in a secure but unlocked and easy accessible location. We are working with our administrative committee as well to determine in the schools where a secure unlocked place would be, in a case of an emergency, because of course, this is an emergency medicine. Somebody's having an allergic reaction, we have to be able to get to it. So in some cases, that may or may not be problematic, but we are working on that. So the personnel that will be trained in the buildings first will be the first responder. Every building has first responders, which are your people that normally deal with the band-aids and cuts the bruises. Now, they will be trained, and also I've talked with Mr. Ron Butler regarding our coaches, because it's also to be available during after-school events on the campus. So they're already working with some things and process there as well. Uh, if you turn over to the next page, I think this is very key, that the EFNF is provided for emergency is not intended to be the sole supply for students who already have a diagnosed condition. So let's say that someone has, already has carry on their person an EFN because they have an allergic reaction to peanuts, or a bee sting, or something that occurs. Our emergency pens that will be on the campus cannot be a substitute for that. So they will still be required to bring their EFNs with them to school as they are in the, with the medical description and under the supervision of the school nurse. And this policy does not require, which I think the last paragraph is very important, that this be, that it is not available off school ground during after, after-school day. For instance, if there's a field trip, it is not required that these EFNs go on that field trip, and also off-site athletic events. Let's say for instance, somebody immediately asked, what is J H Rose is playing DX Conley, when DX Conley, something occurs, it would be DX Conley's devices that would be used for an emergency if something occurs. And if they went to Goldboro High School, we'll bow our heads and pray.
Yeah.
And they would have some too. So that's how it would work.
Mr. Rob.
Uh, my question is, and I've had it asked before, if a coach is on a trip and wants to be trained, uh, can supply with?
Not based on the way the law is written, that they have to be at the school, they could not carry them with them. Not, not say they could be trained, but they could not take a supply.
Benji.
But Sheriff, I got one question back, and that's, men who said that y'all want to go work on the calendar committee.
Correct.
Where the calendar committee also looks at graduation dates.
Um, the graduation dates are usually decided in the ETS committee, and there's also, also a graduation task force. I'm not sure if they're still meeting with that. But the calendar committee does not supply, do not do that.
Once they set the last day of school, then.
Then they do.
It's a given, it's a given.
Yeah, most whoever is, you can drop the spot. But I haven't had a lot of comments, I have had some. Maybe, uh, put some people's parents, whatever, on that too, community on that too.
Okay, any other questions about the emergency EFNF auto injector policy? This is being presented to you for first reading, so I would ask that you read it over, and we do have to put a period at the end of the word plan on page forty-three, we did notice that. So please look over the policy. It is a draft, and we're proposing it to be seven point zero three five in the future, and it has been uplifted from the actual school board association sample policy. So this is not a part of a policy that we made up step by step. We did use the sample. So please review this, and we hope that we'll be able to, uh, present it for second reading at our next meeting.
Any other questions, Mrs. Council?
I have a question about substitutes. Do we need to be hiring some additional substitutes?
We are hiring people every day. We're, we have to get them oriented, background checked, drug screened. I think last week, or on demand, we brought five people in. Because someone would say, that's too far for me to drive, and someone pops up and say, I want to work at, at Stoke School. We oriented three people, and said they would definitely go to Stoke School. So we are out there beating the bushes, trying to get more subs, because we need them, just based on the situation of this. So we are orienting everyone.
All right.
Thanks.
Mayor.
Um, the operations committee met on October twenty-first, um, and after a long and hard and months' worth of trying to figure out our list, um, the operations committee, um, came up with our list of capital funding priorities, which you see there packet on page forty-five. Um, this list includes the immediate needs of the school district. Um, it does not take into account for future growth, it's not taken to account for post-growth, or we think's gonna happen or anything. This is the immediate need, what we need to go do right now, in the opinion of the operations committee, as well as the senior staff. Um, we'd like to take this list upon your approval tonight, down to the county commissioner, to, um, take this and ask to leverage the debt, um, of approximately forty-six point two million dollars for the county for capital funding needs.
Mr. Chairman.
If you have any questions, and look at this.
I'll offer a, um, motion to approve, Mr. Johnson's request, as we have had. Parties, I think it's been a very fair process in terms of looking at the funding. It seemed like a high-priced tag, but certainly it doesn't go really as far enough in terms of everything that's needed, but I would offer the motion that we approve priority listing. Capital funds.
Okay.
Um, Sean, you got it in first. All right, Mayor.
Just got one thing. One, one thing for me, the South River gym renovations. It can, wait on that, do we have to do that now? Do we have to include that now? Can we just wait for?
I mean, that is not necessarily a order.
I want to just take it out.
Offer substitute.
Substitute motion.
Make a substitute motion to take this one out, because I just don't think that that's right. It's still like, just table that.
Okay.
See whether or not we can't get the city to do their part, maybe the counties, all of us to just come in.
Everyone is.
All right.
That's up to that amount.
Mayor.
Yeah, the, the, the six hundred thousand towards that would be our contribution to the city to do their renovation of that gym.
That's what we're gonna do.
That's what we would, that would be our contribution as the county schools towards, to the city towards that gym. Their plan right now is, uh, approximately three point two million dollars for a complete renovation, creating a rec center.
That's what they have committed to us.
No, that's what they're asking us to do.
They will create a rec center for, for the area around South.
All we're looking at is committing six hundred thousand. They're asking for more. They're asking.
Hold on, wait me, I need some.
Go through it again specifically, Mayor.
Matt, okay. Six hundred thousand is what, what we are committed to as a board. The city of Greenville is doing what?
City of Greenville has a proposal right now that they're gonna take the board, their board, and I'm assuming to, out to public, to build a three point two million dollar recreational center complex, which will include a renovation of the current gym, as well as an addition of approximately, uh, twelve to sixteen thousand square feet of additional rooms, weight rooms, locker rooms, computer room, recs, uh, rec rooms, that kind of thing, around that. Um, one of the reasons the committee thought that six hundred thousand was probably a good number is because for South Ringles, using that school, um, we do not require all the extra space, all the extra rooms. They're planning on putting out there. They want to make it, they want to truly make it a weird recreational center. We need it as a multi-purpose room, gym, from eight to three for our students there in there, and that's all we would really need.
Any question? Mayor, you got another question regarding that you satisfied, or you want? Or do you?
The city would like to run a department with that fifty fifty. The problem is, is we just won't get to fifty fifty, so we won't get over one and a half million dollars out of it. When it comes down to, really, we could go in there and do another facility for around six or seven hundred thousand dollars, and have it be just like we were proposing to do it. That's why we were thinking that around that six and thousand mark would be fair, as we could build that facility for around that.
Question? More. So the city is asking us fifty fifty on the three point two million?
Yes, sir.
And we have responded. And we are only responding with six hundred thousand. Okay, we've got a motion, we've got a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving this capital funds priority list, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Pass. Appreciate it, Matt. Okay, we have a joint resolution, DeKalb schools, uh, regarding the board, regarding a joint resolution of Pitt County, and Pitt County schools should jointly commit to bullying prevention. And the, uh, it's a joint resolution of Pitt County, Pitt County schools should jointly commit to bullying prevention, and I think the, uh, public needs to be aware of what we are approving. So I think it needs to be read. Um, so whereas October is National Bullying Prevention Awareness Month, and whereas Pitt County, Pitt County schools have an interest in promoting the social and economic well-being of their citizens, students, and employees, and whereas bullying in the schools, workplace, and community, and community has, uh, become an increasingly significant problem in the United States, and whereas the well-being of Pitt County depends upon the existence of healthy and productive students, employees, and citizens, learning, working, and living in a safe and abuse-free. Learning, working, and living in a safe and abuse-free environments. And whereas almost thirty percent of the youth in the United States are estimated to be involved in bullying each year. And between thirty and fifty percent of employees in the United States are subject to workplace bullying sometimes in their career. And whereas Pitt County Schools has adopted the anti-discrimination, harassment, and bullying student policy, compliance with Article twenty-nine C of the general statutes. Whereas Pitt County Schools has designated the student service department to serve as anti-discrimination, harassment, and bullying coordinator. And to participate in training by the Department of Public Instruction relating to anti-discrimination, anti-harassment, and anti-bullying. Whereas Pitt County Schools proactively seeks to prevent bullying and created, creating a positive school environment through a sustained program of anti-bullying education for students and, uh, staff by the example provided by staff in a way in which bullying incidents and bullies are dealt. And by developing an atmosphere in which both students and parents feel more comfortable in communicating their worries and concerns to those who can help. Whereas abusive school environments are costly for the community with consequences, including negatively impacting a student's connection in school, their engagement with the curriculum, and their overall ability to learn. And whereas bullying can take many forms, including verbal, physical, and most recently in cyberspace, and can happen in many places throughout the community, in the workplace and both on and off school grounds. And whereas some forms of bullying violate existing criminal and civil laws, while other forms may be difficult to prosecute. And whereas in two thousand nine, the General Assembly passed Article twenty-nine C of the general statutes entitled School Violence Prevention, which directed local school administrative districts to adopt a policy prohibiting bullying or harassing behavior. And whereas bullying is a community problem and many interested stakeholders included Pitt County, Pitt County Schools, students, parents, guardians, law enforcement, state officials, and federal officials. And whereas student accountability, parent awareness, and involvement in effective laws are vital to addressing bullying. And whereas it is necessary that all interested stakeholders be committed to raising awareness, developing solutions, and implementing prevention measures to eradicate bullying in our community. And now therefore be it resolved that Pitt County and the Pitt County Schools jointly resolve their unified commitment to the education, prevention of bullying within our communities, schools, and workplaces. And that Pitt County and Pitt County Schools be actively engaging in exploring solutions to the problem with all interested stakeholders in order that effective deterrence can be created, strengthened to prevent bullying in our community. But it further resolved that this resolution be sent to the members of the North Carolina General Assembly and that all legislators be urged to study further actions that may be taken at the state level consistent with and in support of this resolution. And it will be, uh, signed by the Pitt County Chairman of Pitt County Board of Commissioners, the clerk to the board, and the Pitt County Board of Education Chairman.
Check. I move to approve the resolution as agreed, sir.
Mr. Forrest, uh, made the motion and, uh, Sean seconded. And Ms. Mildred has a question.
Okay, the question I have is October is over with. So now we are approving this for October two thousand fifteen only since we just passed October two thousand fourteen.
Put in place, period, right?
Right, yes.
October is national.
Out of any.
It was, uh, October was National Bullying Month, so that's why it was written there. But the day that's gonna be adopted is the day that we, uh, sign that we approve it, which will be this meeting.
Mm-hmm, and it, and it'll become effective October two thousand fifteen.
It'd become effective right now when we approve. As soon as we can sign.
Okay. So it'd be for every month, but we just approved it behind, suppose it'd been October, which is the National Bullying Month. That's what I'm trying to get to.
Well, what we, uh, what they did, they wrote this during the National Bullying Month, which was October.
Okay.
We are just getting the resolution that has been updated and made some changes that were made within it. And as soon as we approve it tonight, it'll be effective, yes. Sean.
I think it's important to note with this, um, Mr. Chairman, that professional bullying is nothing new to Pitt County schools. I'm very proud of Pitt County schools and they've always been a leader in professional bullying. How long we had our policy in place, it's been a lot longer than other school systems in the state, and that's why I'm very proud. And this, this resolution is very good, just don't want it to ever take away from our. Being done.
And I just think this is what we're doing is, and saying is that we're going to further commit to improve and do the best we can, whatever we, uh, do within Pitt County. Jill?
I think the other part of this is now the county is publicly committed. They have a role to play in this as well in the workplace and in other areas outside of schools in their community.
Right. Mr. Moore.
And we need to make sure this is put somewhere, it shoved in a drawer somewhere and forgotten. So it would be part of our ordinances or whatever we've got, or put on a board somewhere. Because otherwise, after we get through with it this month, it might get in some drawer somewhere, you never see it again. So how, what are we gonna do with it?
These resolutions that we have, I mean, they're, they're all file. Uh, and but yet they're, uh, for us and the public as well as the public, uh, document for them to be able to see this and make us accountable. Say, why is it shoved in a drawer like you're, you're saying, which it will not be?
Will not be.
Right?
And I think our schools are continuing to not follow this issue.
Okay, we've got a, um, motion and we're gonna second it. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose? Motion carried. Mark. Oh, we've got, uh, comments by the superintendent.
The opinion on the teaching process, we have activities designed for all the principals as well as the, take place at all the schools. So the teachers and principals will all be involved in that process. Several months and also, uh, I could see the most intense volleyball game I think I've ever seen in my life Saturday, uh, I was sweating. So, congratulations.
I would just like to say, uh, I thought it was great, uh, we've got a great comprehensive school improvement plan process that's gonna create some accountability as well as include parents and community. And I just think that it's will be good, it's a good document for people who have any questions to be able to go to and be able to see the, any information that they need to see. Even in regards to the budget as well as scores, as well as discipline and so forth. So I thought that was good. Billy?
I enjoyed the meeting tonight. I know it's been a long, and I know some of those folks got some other things they'd like to say more.
All right, Jill?
I guess I would, I would like to say one more thing, and that is, um, for me personally, and I'm sure for all of us around this table, the reason that we, that we serve on this board is because we believe that in this country, a healthy system of public education is critical to our continued success and growth as a nation. And, um, it's a scary, it, when you believe that, right now is a scary time because it feels like our own, our own different levels of government are attacking that, that public education that we all hold so dear. And I hope that, um, this board will continue to find ways to meet the needs of our students. But that hopefully the, the broader community will embrace the value of public education and that that will continue to strengthen Pitt County.
All right, Mayor.
I agree with what Jill says, so vote for me tomorrow. I'll go. I agree with what she says, so vote for me tomorrow. I'm serious. I am dead serious.
Jennifer.
Dead serious.
Um, the only thing, other thing I wanted to say in addition to my comments earlier is, uh, thank you to senior staff of Pitt County Schools, the teachers, the principals, and everybody involved. But especially the senior staff and Dr. Linker, um, in that serving on this board is, um, it's so much easier because of all y'all and the time that you put into it, the professionalism and the, um, just all the reports, all the contacts, Carol, everybody that really makes this position, um, really. It's enjoyable is not the word I'm looking for, but anyway, thank you for making it easier. I appreciate it.
Minute. Enjoyable and minute, anyway.
But no, thank you all. You do a fabulous job and it reflects in our, the education that our children get in Pitt County Schools. So thank you.
I was just gonna say the same thing. I was going to, um, just say thank you to, um, the senior staff and all of your hard work that you do for us. And being in the classroom, I think I've said this before, I didn't realize all of the, um, effort that goes into getting the, the business ready for this meeting until I started attending the committee meetings. But, you know, we, we have a good team. And, um, we hear a lot of negative comments in the paper and things like that. But, you know, they just don't realize the hard work that, that everybody puts forth. And, and I'm proud of you. I'm proud of this school system. And even if this is my last night, I, I still want to be involved in some way. So, um, you can count on me to support you.
Thanks. More. Um, Sean.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I congratulate you for the volleyball and the state championship. That's a great accomplishment. You know, I complimented several principals, but in case you might want to, I want to compliment all principals and all faculty. Assistant principals and everyone. I'd like to thank them for coming. Everybody running for office tomorrow, basically, we'd like to support. And that's a special time, we should best. I would like to thank, uh, the seven board members who are not on reelection. Jill, thank you. I respect the need of the seven. Fantastic, fantastic. We should do everything that the school system. When you first came on this board, most of our students were full.
A lot of us.
That's quite a lot.
Oh, my God.
Thanks, Sean.
And I think Bill Clinton, President.
Give it to him. No, he didn't do it. No, he didn't. He didn't make it. He didn't make it, really.
Miss Owens, I'd like to thank you for always spending time with me and teaching about learning to serve. Pleasure. And dignity and grace and I. And lastly, I want to thank my senior general, who is just such a true leader in our community. Told people time and time again, the right person won in two thousand eight. Great job on this one. There's a lot of stories about Jennifer, but I could share, she doesn't share with the team. Now, by the time I've run into Jennifer at school, she's combined students, supplies with those students. Uh, if you look at her at the graduations, you can see students, certain students who graduate. And you can see the tears coming down their face. She's very proud and she knew that. Her great attitude for her students.
You timed that just right.
I sure did, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, appreciate that. This Mayor.
Okay, I would just like to, um, say thanks to all the outgoing board members that are leading us. It's been a pleasure serving with Jill, Jennifer, and Barbara. Wish you all the best and stay in touch with us and get those votes out tomorrow so we can get better gains for our public school system. And like to say to all of us that are remaining in our. Like to say tomorrow is election day and we feel about, how we feel about public schools. It's urgent that we haven't already voted to get the votes out. Take somebody with you and help them make the best choices. If they don't know, tell them what's going on. That's what I've been doing. And I've been working since before May on this, and so I'm looking for some good outcomes tomorrow. And, uh, because we definitely need people that is concerned about education. Because we all got education from somewhere. And so that should be just the bottom line that we all should understand. If you need a voter guide, I have some. And I also have some report cards on all of our legislators that have done this really bad. And you're going to report from our budget person tonight. Thank you for sharing that. Get the vote out and remember the issues of funding our schools, great jobs, voting rights, healthcare. And by the way, I can tell you all, they left me off the ballot. I can't even vote for myself tomorrow. I'm a product of voter suppression. So I want you all to know that I do not vote for myself. So Ryan Brown, I hope that this is your last day in office because you started this foolishness. And I have personal, you know, concerns about it. I am not on my ballot. So voter suppression is real. And if you don't vote tomorrow, then it's your fault. If you don't get who we supposed to have, because everybody has a vote. I can vote for some other folk, but I can't vote for myself. And I am on seven other ballots, so I will get some votes.
Mr. Forrest.
But my three people in my household cannot vote for Mildred Axon Council. I'm not on my ballot. So I thought I would tell you all that.
Mr. Forrest.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to say to all the outgoing board members, uh, wish you all well.
It's free.
Appreciate, uh, serving with you. You have made me a vote board member. And, uh, I'm more attuned to, uh, conduct and be, um, preside at these meetings. So I do want to thank you and wish you all well for that. Um, also, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say, uh, I'm looking forward to tomorrow. Tomorrow is a, is a tremendous day because we are so fortunate in this country to be able to have freedom to choose our elected officials. And, uh, it's an honor and privilege to do so. Don't ever take that for granted. Because in so many other countries in this world, there are people out there that wish that they could do what we're doing tomorrow. May our young people watch this and see how this is happening because it is something we need to instill in today. The importance of the civic mind and doing what is constitutionally available to us to, to, uh, keep and live for. Country, county, and nation.
Mr. Moore.
Thank you. Christine, I think is gone. Jennifer, Barbara, Jill. Little poem I learned way back when I was in, in high school. I want to read it to you. You guys have helped me a lot since my past year, year ahead. To have succeeded. Ralph Waldo Kimmer. Laugh often and love much. Win the respect of intelligent people for joy and the affection due. Earn the approbation of honest critics and endured betrayal of false friends. Appreciate duty to find the best in others. To give of oneself, to leave the world a little better. Whether by a healthy child, a garden patch, or a redeemed social condition. To have played and laughed with enthusiasm and sung with exultation. Know that one life is breathed easier. Have lived. This is to absolutely. Done that at least once. Thank you.
Appreciate you. Very nice. Miss Owens? I don't.
I don't.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we go into closed session, one, to prevent the disclosure of privileged information under one fifteen C dash four oh two and one fifteen C dash three twenty-one of the North Carolina General Statutes or regula- regulations, and under twenty USC twelve thirty-two G FERPA, the regulations or laws of the United States, and to consult with our attorney to protect the attorney-client privilege, and to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, condition of appoint, of appointment of a public officer or employee, or prospective public officer or employee, or hear or investigate a complaint, charge, or grievance by or against a public officer or employee.
Made the motion, I hear seconded. Ben just seconded it. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?